Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Plan Board to order. It is Thursday, June 23 at 7:00 PM. We are meeting in public at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. Tonight's first item on the agenda is continued site plan review for 156 Rhode Island Road. And at the applicant's request, they would like to continue. I know we have a meeting, but I got a note somewhere in the packet that they'd like to continue the second meeting in July.
Yep, that's correct. Yep, to the 28th.
July 28. But I move that we continue the 156 Rhode Island Road Site Plan Review until July 28, that's 7:00 PM. Should I do 7:00 PM because we have that joint meeting?
7:30 PM.
Till 7:30 PM. Second. Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding modifying setbacks and coverage in business industrial zones. So, Mark, I'll let you delve into maybe the jux of where we're at with what you've come up with and...
Okay. Excuse me, so I passed out. You know, multi-page item here, but it only has a few articles. The first one we'll skip over for just a moment. And we'll get because what you mentioned about lot coverage. So currently, all the zones have a 50% lot coverage. And we have a section in the bylaw that allows density bonuses of additional 10%. And then if you meet certain standards, and another additional 10% if you meet additional other standards. And those standards are really site design standards and building design standards in order to get the density bonus. So what we wrote and what town meeting approved was an updated Site Plan Review bylaw that has very similar site design and...
Some of your done this yourself.
Building design standards. So... So, and we had originally talked about, well, once that passes, we now have the ability to control site design and building design through Site Plan Review. So this density bonus that really is designed to apply only to big box retail stores, which is what the section says, large-scale quote "big box" design standards, has been kind of applied across the board to really anything that needs higher or requests a higher density. So, um... As a result, I mean, I think we ought to propose adjusting the lot coverages to allow a higher lot coverage by right. And we can control or, you know, work with the applicant or developer on adjusting the site plan or the building design as necessary. And we don't need this density bonus that has been, you know, used kind of, you know, at, you know, not in the intended way, so. So what I've proposed here is that what we do is in the business district that we allow 70% lot coverage. And with a planning board special permit, you can go to 80%. And in the industrial zone, we have two industrial... In one of the industrial zones, which is our main industrial zone, we go to 80%. And the industrial B zone, which is just one parcel over, or one large area over by 140 and Route 79 at the intersection, there's one large area. But the perimeter looks like there's a bunch of new houses around the edge of that property and there's some wetlands. So I think having higher than currently is allowed, but not quite as high as the other industry. The main industrial zone is appropriate.
Okay. I guess my only fear is giving the by right. I'd rather, I feel like I'd rather see 50% still by right and allow a higher percentage with special permit. But the special permit triggers at 50%.
Yeah, I think the 50%, I mean, you have, if you look at your zoning map, you have a very limited amount of commercial and industrial lands. So restricting that development to such a small area is...
Well, I'm not trying to restrict it. I'm saying that we still would allow it to 80%. I guess my concern is, let's just say, five years from now. You maybe have moved on to another town or have retired, I don't know. And this board, all the faces have changed.
Yes.
And I know there's a, there's a big learning curve when somebody comes into the planning board. And so if they're not, they don't fully grasp the reasoning and the intent of these changes and how we got there with the new Site Plan Review improvements. And they don't know how to use it and maybe, you know, similar with a different planner. Having it as special permit, not to deny, but to just steer the process. That's all I'm thinking. I'm not trying to...
It does, it does, you are correct. It does give the board more control. And if you make it a planning board special permit, it's still one-stop shop, so to speak, for the applicant. But it gives the board a bit more control in order to say no if, you know, an applicant isn't necessarily as responsive as the board would like.
Well, and so educate me. Let's just say we made the amendments as you have them drafted. And we go from business to be by right 70% from 50%. And yes, we have the language for architectural design in the current Site Plan Review. But once it's approved and it's permitted, with, if that's not a special permit, if that's by right, and they say, "We ran out of money, so we're not doing any landscaping. We're just planting grass, no trees." What kind of teeth do we have in that to make them plant trees after the fact if it's by right? And they just don't as opposed to it being a special permit?
Well, once, once the permits are issued, it's this, whether it's a special permit or just a regular site plan approval, the process is essentially the same. It'd be an enforcement action or the withholding of a occupancy permit depending on, you know, how the building commissioner would deal with that here. So I haven't run into it here. Some towns that they make the planner sign off that everything's been done before they issue a CO. And in other places, the building commissioner will issue a CO, but then he'll take an enforcement action against them for violating the approval. So like, you know, they're violating the zoning approval, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So what's the benefit to the town to these increases?
More fishing use of property. And if you're going to zone something for a business or an industrial use, you want to maximize the use of that property. Because you really have a very small amount of areas that are zoned for those particular uses. You know, remember, they also have to have, you know, they may never get to that because a lot of areas don't have water or they only have water and no areas have sewer. So, you know, getting to that number for some businesses may be a little challenging. If we have town water, it's a little easier for them to get to those numbers because they really then have to, septic design systems can be under parking lots and other parts of the site, but...
I just, I think it's a very significant jump. I'm not myself comfortable with it.
Mr. Chairman, Jack, if I may. You talked about, once you issue the CO, some of these towns have the ability to go back and enforce it, issue a permit and make them enforce it. Does Lakeville at this current time have that ability or should we?
Well, I think, you know, before our next meeting to discuss this, so talk to Nate about how he would do it here in Lakeville. I haven't had that discussion with him yet, so.
So I guess that's probably a two-part and what you just suggested needs to happen first. And the second part, if we could come to terms with language within the bylaw change and an agreement with the zoning enforcement official, then it would take legal review to make sure that what we've done also is somewhat binding to council.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So, I mean, I thought we had talked about previously, you know, if we were to do away with the density bonus, we could mimic like the residential with the 25 and then go up to 50 instead of going from 50 up to the 70. Because, you know, when I look at the hazardous mitigation plan, it talks about different strategies. And one of them is promote creation of a low-impact development by law for flood resilience and water quality is one of the items. And then it talks about the amount of development in Lakeville and knowing that we have flood, flooding issues and a lot of wetlands that need protection. To increase the coverage of the land, it's, it doesn't seem like a smart move when we're thinking in terms of hazardous mitigation and flooding and different things like that. So the average annual development in acres from 2019, 113.48 acres. 2020, 58.36 acres. 2021, 69.51 acres. That's a lot of acres being developed year after year after year. And I think to increase the lot coverage is just going to compound the issues of flooding that we have currently in town. There's roads, I mean, it lists in this plan the roads that are, that do become impassable when we have the big floods or the big rainstorms. So I personally would not be comfortable...
Is that something that we could include language, especially if it's within a flood plain or...
So currently, in the new Site Plan Review bylaw, you require that, or can require that they utilize, I mean, that's the first step, is that they try and utilize low-impact development methods to deal with drainage. Secondly, they have to contain all the drainage on-site. So, and not increase the drainage off-the-site than the previous conditions. So that's part of your, I mean, and that's how you've been doing it all along when you have required, you know, major site plan, you know, site plans with drainage reports. That's how they're designed, subdivisions are designed that way so that they're not increasing flooding off-site. So again, you know, it's, you know, and that you're recharging the groundwater and those types of things. So that's already occurring. And it will continue to occur as we move forward. So that's, so for example, Two Bedford Street. A lot of those parking lots drained off into small little four-bay type basins. Then there was a long swale to infiltrate the water before it went overflowed or any overflow would go to the wetland. So they do like a pre-existing analysis and then they do a post-construction analysis. And then they try and design a system that will match those two numbers, so.
I still, I think, you know, with it being by right, it's a little too much.
Okay.
Mark, if I may.
Peter, go right ahead.
So in the years past, if no one mentioned it, we tried to get rid of industrial B. And we went to the people who were on the, on the land as industrial B. And we said, "Would you be interested in just changing over to residential?" You live in a residential home. And most of the people were like, "Yeah, that makes total sense." This is, except for one group. And so I don't think we should increase industrial B. The goal is to get rid of that, in my opinion.
Okay.
So either we keep it at 50, but not increase it.
Okay, I didn't know the history of the industrial B.
This is probably five or six years ago. And we actually pulled it from a town meeting because I refused to bring something to town meeting that those people were going to be like, "Oh, we're losing. You're taking value from me." Well, I don't want to take value from anybody. But at the same time, I don't want to make it easier for them to steamroll their house and say, "Here comes a warehouse," you know what I mean?
Okay, yep.
So if possible, that one, I would say, let's just keep it at 50.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep, no, that does make sense. I had no idea, so.
And I see you made a note to change smaller, non-conforming lots under 10,000 square feet. So normal residential is 25% coverage, but do a special permit so that they could cover up to 35%.
That's correct. So currently, so for example, Clark Shores and some of the other little older neighborhoods along the lake have lots down to 5,000 square feet that people are coming in to either tear down and build back at a garage. Many homes are being rehabbed and to their forever home. We just did one last week at the zoning board. So the lot coverage is, in these areas, is always coming up as an issue. So rather than make it have to be a variance, which is a harder standard to prove, the idea would be to let them ask for a special permit. So if there are certain other conditions that may come up during our concerns that may come up during the initial hearing, the zoning board would have some flexibility about whether to grant a special permit or not. So, you know, move the, a recent example was the garage kind of stuck out in front of the house, obstructing some views. So they asked, they got them to move it back and make it flush with the house. You know, other things they could, you know, they could, you know, make something. If a concern is about being too close to the property line, you know, they can move it further in, but allow them to extend it. So they are too high, they can, it gives them more flexibility in meeting, still being able to do sort of what they want, but not having to try and meet the variance or a standard for variance.
Another first thing that comes to mind when I see the, the next line there, "A requirement of these special permits shall be that roof drainage shall be directly into an infiltration system." And most of those small lots are in small, I'm not going to say pond front, but on the lakes, whether they're waterfront or not. And one of the issues with that, they all struggle to do septic systems because the water cable's so high. So even just to be able to infiltrate the water into the ground. In a lot of cases, the water level is, or the groundwater level is only 30 inches down from the surface.
Right.
So I don't know that, I guess...
It may not be practical in all situations.
Yeah, and I would just want to make sure if we were going to allow that somehow, that language was in there to just, like you say, two boards from now, whether it be the ZBA or us or whoever's going to approve that, that there's a note in there about that because that's almost like, then it delves into this conservation getting involved because they're close to the water. I know we've talked about that because we've had some lots come in that they wanted to make improvements. And they were getting up around 30% lot coverage. And a lot of it was existing, but you know, somebody puts a little patio in on the weekend. They don't get it approved. And then they come back to do, put a new well in. And all of a sudden, we get a plan that has 31% lot coverage. And so in some of those cases, conservations tried to get them to offset that non-permeable coverage by infiltrating the roof drains. And we maybe give them back the square footage of the roof as permeable if that could be infiltrated.
Well, Mark, when you said CONCOM gets involved, you just brought to mind the Board of Health as well because I know Board of Health would like to have a, you know, in case of failure of a septic system, they have to have a location that a replacement can go. So I think when you're talking about small, smaller lots and increasing the lot coverage, I think that's something else that would need to be reviewed as well.
And they would. They'd be a part of that process anyway if it's going through the permitting process. But again, I think we'd want language in there just to make it a trigger for everybody to know.
Okay. All right, well, the other thing, when I talked to Nate about this section, he says, "Well, you know, that's fine for the really small lots, but we also have kind of these, like off of Main Street, these 20,000, 30,000 square foot lots." If you have a big house or reasonably sized house with a deck and a parking area and a garage, your existing house may even be already over that 25%. So if you want to add a pool or a new, because there's lots of bigger, it's not unreasonable to do that. So he's, so we talked about maybe doing a second tier of a higher percentage as well for like, let's say, the 20,000 to 30,000 or the 10, you know. We'll discuss this a little more, but because we only had the one hearing and we had to come to continue what I wanted to. And this is good because it gives me some, some feedback so we can get this, this discussion on these kind of moving forward.
So then obviously, with some of these changes above, you've noted out to remove the entire density bonus. Do we want to remove the big box design standards entirely?
Oh, technically, they're really only supposed to apply to, I mean, I would.
Home Depot and Walmart type of buildings.
Says, "Apply to all developments requesting a density bonus pursuant to Section 514 and to all retail buildings of 35,000 square or more square feet." So, you know, I don't know how many 35,000 square feet foot retail buildings you've approved, but I don't think there's really any.
Personally, zero. 35,000.
Biggest ones of recent would be like the Walgreens, CVS, and they're probably closer to, I was going to say 12 to 15.
What about the Route 44 section over by the pet store?
Oh, 44?
Are those...
The ones on, the ones that are yet to be built in, those ones like the business base, the contractor base?
Oh, yeah, that too. But I was thinking like down there. I didn't know if any of that would be considered retail.
Oh, right, non-retail, sorry.
Well, what you're talking about is not retail, but I know is Michelle's point. Is there land down there that could be developed that is actually a location that a store like, a store that would fit these criteria might go to? That's why I think, I hate to eliminate it and then we get one to come to town.
Well, but I think, I think you can, I mean, your...
The Site Plan Review would now encompass...
Your Site Plan Review is, although it doesn't require, like, it doesn't say, "Oh, you have to have a break-in the wall facade every 100 feet," you know. I think, you know, in discussing and reviewing the site design and the building design, you know, if that's an important feature, you can bring that up and under Site Plan Review and request that, whether you want to see dormers, whether you want to see cupolas, whether you want to see some other roof features. I mean, those are all things that you can bring up under Site Plan Review under your new architectural standards, so.
After big box, you had one note about signs off-site.
So you've already removed off-premise signs. You've already prohibited those in the new sign bylaw. So again, this is just like we did some change. I think it was for boat repairs or something that was left in the section under special permits. But this was left in the section. I didn't know it existed till I was reading through and found this related to off-premise signs, so.
What do you think, Peter?
This is basically billboard. This is more of a billboard.
Billboard or any business, you know, that might find a house down here that doesn't mind having a sign on his property.
Shall not exceed 12 square feet in area, three by four, or must be found to be appropriate for the location. Yeah, I mean, the ZBA is going to be the granting authority.
Yeah, but I'm saying we would remove this.
Oh, remove it completely?
This is in there now.
I'm trying to think of an example of this and when I've seen something. I mean, I don't want to, I just don't want to take away like and people find, you know, find a way to say, you know...
Well, we don't, we don't have very many. And I can't even think of any off-premise signs right now aside from the one that's kind of electronic one that was permitted up on Route 44. That's the only one I can think of, but there may be...
And it's, it's on 44 and it's permitted and it's off-premise, like it's...
Well, it can advertise anything.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's one of those electronic billboards.
Right.
So this would, I mean, we already prohibit the additional ones of those in the town because of the new bylaw. And we also no longer allow off-premise signs, so. So this is kind of contrary to what was approved in the sign bylaw.
Yeah, as long as this is already covered, I think I'm good with removing it.
Okay. Like you said, you have to kind of reach to find examples of it.
Right. You don't have a lot of off-premise signs. There may be a few scattered about, but I don't really know. And the, the last one is the first one on the first sheet having to do with more than one principal structure on a lot. So for example, you know, where you can, you want to build a plaza, you can only have one building as opposed to up Main Street, there's a white plaza with the buildings run perpendicular to Main Street on the right. And though there's a building out front and then there's... And though there's a building out front, and then there's either one super long one, or maybe it's broken up into two. But, um.
Where, where are we talking?
Across from the hospital, across from the bank, um, there's a, um, there's amazing cakes, um, the pool place. Um, and that's an example of like two, two buildings in one lot, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're built at the exact same time or not, I'm, I'm, I forget, but.
And then the one on the right side was built after the one on the, the left, after the.
But there really is no, I, I'm not sure why that existed, but. Again, it's something that, so for example, the, the one I know, cause I just met with them, is, um. Is a mini storage on, is it County Road at the end of Highland Street?
Oh, yeah.
So they've been back to the zoning board twice already. It was, well, there was an original permit to allow them to do four standalone buildings. And then they came back for a special permit to do four more buildings, so, um. And, so that's what, in the, and they've justified trying to get the special permit, cause it was already a non-conforming use. Because it already had four standalone buildings.
Yep.
So they, their justification, so again, it's a kind of a roundabout way of get, trying to get around this section.
Couldn't you argue that, that those standalone buildings aren't principal structures, that the principal structure is like the office?
Yeah, that, that would be the one arguing against changing that, because you're potentially, you're. Letting somebody come in and negate your zoning, if they can put up two buildings on an undersized lot that wouldn't normally have two buildings. Because of frontage reasons.
Actually, well, for that, for that area in particular, it's, they actually, it should be interpreted the opposite way. Because the use is storage, the use is an office.
Right.
So each of those storage buildings is the actual use.
Oh, good point.
So it should, the argument should be.
No, the, well, the office is the primary structure though, cause it all goes through there, so. There, it, it, but again, I'm, I'm not totally disagreeing, because then our bylaw currently reads that you can have an accessory structure. But it can only be fifteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, access, yeah, but for, for example, where you have your buildings right here on Bedford Street. Uh, there's, there's like three buildings, I think you, you don't own the, you said the one in front of the lo- your long building in back.
Yep.
But what would be the reason for those three buildings not to be on the same parcel? Let's say you, you own the big parcel, and you wanted to build them in stages as, as you lease them out. What would be wrong, bad about that? What would be?
Does it have to do with septics as well, since we don't have the town sewer or water, and, and each, you know, structure would have to have their own septic and?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's a builder's choice, whether to build one large system for in anticipation of the three buildings. Um, or to build three, I mean, there's plenty of room, uh, to do so, to build three separate sys- systems. Um, you know.
I mean, I can't really think of a reason why not to remove it, really, you know?
But is, this is not just pertaining to business or industrial, this is for residential as well, right? So then if we remove this, is everybody gonna be turning their?
Well, I mean, you have a, most of your residential is single, is single family zoning, so you can only build one house on one lot, so. It really doesn't affect residential, cause you can only build one house on one lot for residential. So it doesn't really affect that, I mean, this is really for, um, for, again, for your commercial. And industrial, uh, properties.
Then I have to, I, I would have to think we need to make sure that that's stated, that it's for the industrial.
Well, we're removing. This section, so.
And ha- have you spoken to Nate about it? I'm just curious, to just make sure that, you know, he's.
Yeah, he's, he's okay with this one.
I mean, I personally don't see a problem with it, but if we wanna vet it out to another meeting and think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at least, uh, what I wanted to do is to make use of tonight's meeting, so to get some ideas out here. So that we can discuss them, find out like, so for example, I don't have the history, like industrial B, you know, find stuff like that out. You know, find out that you prefer to have, you're okay with increasing lot coverage, but you would like. It to be more by special permit than by right, um, so, you know, those are, that's the kind of thing, so. We can leave this on, and, uh, I can get some other feedback, and you guys can think about it.
And, but just if you, if you're, if, if, just for the sake of, um, discussion. If you're at the storage facility, you go just slightly further down to, to where the pizza place is. A very strange arrangement, but an example of like where they put like a, uh, bank on the corner of a, uh. Of a, of an odd shaped lot, but it's been there for quite a while. And I don't see it's been a, an issue to anybody, you know what I mean? It didn't do very well as a bank, but, uh, it was open for like a week.
Yeah, well, it's, it's kind of like right next to Town Hall, we have the plaza, right? And then we have the, again, another bank that didn't do very well.
Yeah.
Um, is closed, but, um, you know, it's, hopefully it's soon, it'll be something else. It's being worked on, so.
Okay, so we'll vet that a little bit.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Do the talk, and then we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Sounds good. So we have two sets of minutes to approve. One was that. Joint meeting, I believe, if I'm calling that correctly. Yep. So it's the select board meeting minutes from April twentieth, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty P M. Which was at the Lakeville Public Library. Uh, did everybody get a chance to review those?
Yes.
I know that we approved the minutes of April twentieth of the select board and the planning board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't, I wasn't there for that meeting, so I'm just gonna.
Motion carries with the majority. Uh, the next minutes we have are the planning board minutes from May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Uh. Looks like Nora, you were at that one?
I was not.
Uh, anybody else have any questions or comments or, uh, edits?
No.
It looked pretty good to me.
That's good.
Motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-sixth, a second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries with the majority. Uh, any correspondence? Our next meeting is July fourteenth at seven P M. Here?
Uh, yes, yes.
Is there anything pending for the agenda for that one at this point?
Um, probably just more discussion of, um, some additional, the, these changes, I don't have a lot of. Other additional changes, but we have one more to discuss tonight, and, um.
So under new business, wanna?
Yep, that's fine.
Is it Dan?
Yes.
Dan, come on up to the, the little desk here with the microphone.
So, I'm just gonna present.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, okay.
Just state your name for the record.
Dan, Daniel, I'm Christine Cooney, fifty-nine Main Street. We have a small business, um, heavenly spirits, we live at, we live and work at fifty-nine Main Street. We bought the land directly across the street from us at fifty-eight Main Street, it's a vacant lot, was a house that was demolished. A year and a half ago, we were looking at the possibility, and we bounced the idea off of your board. And you gave us some feedback, and, uh, we decided to go ahead and do it, and try to make adjustments so that it would fit. Um, so that we can go ahead and build the building we want, which would contain retail, offices, and some storage. And we've made some adjustments based on what you said, I have some drawings. Um, in, in the one hangup was something to do with the clarity of. The difference between that we would have a retail, which would make it commercial for what we store there. Um, so we've tried to address that, I had a little conversation with Mark briefly yesterday, he invited me to the meeting tonight. To, again, sort of bounce it off you and get some clarity, and then. I guess that's what I'm looking for, we'd like a path forward, I mean, we bought the property in February, we're ready to go, um. We have our offices across the street, um, we have our, a storage facility, distribution center down in, um. And a small one, down, down at, uh, Wareham, and we like to put the two together. Um, we have, uh, an interested tenant to, to take some of the retail spot that we're gonna put. I mean, we've divided it up so that there's, uh, it's a ten thousand square foot building that, that we're proposing, and it's, um. Six thousand, uh, square feet of, uh, retail. Four thousand, I gotta get my glasses on, sorry. Uh, probably four thousand square feet of retail space, uh, two thousand square feet of office, and six thousand square feet of storage space. So we think it's well proportioned for the site, it doesn't overbuild, it conforms to everything else on the list, but.
Could you run down the square footages again?
It's ten thousand totally, oh, okay, I, I, it doesn't add up, it's because there's a second floor, there's a second floor. On, on, so kind of two thousand square feet on the second floor for offices, uh, four thousand square feet in the front for, um, retail. Of two or three possible shops, and then, uh, six thousand square feet in the back for storage. One dark door.
So I guess my question would be to the zoning enforcement official as to how that would fit, just to make sure it would work for them.
Well, that's why I drafted this little amendment to the zoning use chart, because. Unless he sells, his, his business is selling wine, and so unless he sells wine. He's storing the product that he's not selling, so it's kind of like a warehouse in distribution, even though it's on a super small scale. It's not a billion square feet, but it's.
And we would be selling some of what we have.
Right.
We would sell all of it if the three-tier alcohol distribution system allowed it, we would do it, but it doesn't. We can only do two tiers, and we do have non-alcoholic, um, products, uh, that, that are, that are. It's a new thing now, non-alcoholic alcohol, uh, spirits, uh, and wine that is non-alcoholic. So we do have some of those, and we would be willing to sell those, no problem, um, and, uh, well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's, so it is something like that.
Yeah, so, um, so in my discussions with Nate, I think that was before you, you offered to sell some. Product, product there, was that it was really, even though it's on a wicked small, really small scale. It's offices with a small distribution area, so, um. So, but we talked before, and then he came in and we talked again, um, and. You know, it's, with so much, so many businesses being online as well, as having a storefront is presence as well. It may be helpful in, in trying to attract and, and fill retail space in the community to allow. Businesses who, who do have, um, retail to have a greater amount of storage. Than you would normally have for a regular retail, most retail places keep, you know, inventory kind of low. Most of their space is the storefront, you know, they do have a small storeroom in the back, so here you're kind of flipping it. With, you know, whatever size retail is appropriate for that store, and let them have a much larger. Storeroom in the back, because if they do sell lots of product online, they may need that space for, for him. He distributes the product to retailers, um, so, um, he needs to have the space in order to, to do that. Um, but, um, so. That's why we, we talked about doing something like this with the retail with up to seventy-five hundred square feet of storage. And distribution, uh, he needs, uh, six thousand for this particular, based on his design.
Yeah.
Um, I, I figured, you know, you, you never know, some places may need a tiny bit more. It really starts to get much over ten thousand square feet of storage, you're beginning to probably have. A, a greater number of vehicles and other trucks, and maybe that shouldn't be in the business zone, but. But something like this, I think, um, you know.
How do you distribute your product currently?
Um, well, we have, um, we get one container a month, so that's a, that's a, you know, eighteen wheeler that comes in, one, one a month. Uh, all our products come from France, so they ship into Boston, we get that once a month.
How do you get them out to your customers, though?
Um, so then, uh, different truckers or will come in, um, smaller truckers, and, and take a pallet or two. And then they, then they move it out, and that's it, so, and that comes, we get like five a week, so. And I'm comparing it myself to the dollar store, and they do sometimes five a day, and, and, and the, the trailer, truck trailer trucks come sometimes two or three times a day. So we're like a fraction of that, and I'm willing to stay within any limits you set, because we won't be open as late. I've got a whole list here, we, we, we'll be, we'll have less truck traffic, less auto retail traffic, um, be quieter. I think, you know, we've already checked with all our neighbors, and everybody seems to be fine with it, and I haven't met anybody who said, oh, we, we don't want it. Someone like, oh, that's great, that's better than having, you know, this, that, or the other thing, you know, so, I don't know, I, I feel like. I feel like it's a good fit, and, and it does conform as much as we can to the letter of the law, and I think we're not the only small business. That, that now does, like you say, a lot of retail stuff, or, I mean, retail and then online, you know, shipping, you know, and, and Amazon is. It's all shipping at all, you know, so, I mean, we don't wanna be Amazon at all, we're not even close to it, but, how, you know, I don't wanna give them the advantage when.
Yeah, and, and my concern with the language change is just to make sure that. We, you know, we're making an effort to bring a business into town, which is a good thing. But I don't wanna open a door to have somebody come in and say, all right, I'm gonna put up an eight thousand square foot building. I'll put a little corner five hundred square foot office and do seventy-four hundred, seventy-five hundred square feet of. In, in a business zone, and you took a spot to, it, it, it's a loophole to become a warehouse, potentially. And I would rather see a limited.
But that office space, that little office space would have to be open for sales, correct?
You have to have some retail, yeah.
You would have to, but, uh, again, I mean, it's, that's, that, to me, that becomes an industrial use of the retail component.
Yeah.
And I just, I, it's a slippery slope, and I'm not trying to say no to what's in front of us, but I just. You know how people get the bylaw, and then they have a lawyer read it, say, yeah, we can do that, and I guess I'm trying to get out in front of. Uh, us looking bad and something else coming to town that found the loophole, and we need to close it now.
You, you said there's gonna be a total of three businesses in there, or four?
Two to three, two to three retail.
And you, and you already have a second?
Well, we have somebody's interested, yeah, all right, and, and, well, I, I have to, have to reach out, please.
Okay.
I, I just think that we need to. You know, if you said retail up to a certain square footage, but a maximum of. Fifty percent of the building's square footage, or thereabouts, so at least half of the building still had to stay retail.
Does that work with what you just described?
Yes.
Barely, yes, it's barely, if we count, well, not retail, no, cause we want off, some office space, six, we want our office space, and our office in our, it's kind of combined.
But your office doesn't count towards your warehouse.
No.
What I'm saying is, even if you have.
So maximum warehouse fifty percent.
Five hundred square feet of retail and office, and then you still have five thousand square feet of. That's still less than half of the twelve thousand square feet, or, or, but you, it's, is, the storage is still less than.
Well, the way we have it, is the front is of, of, I think, four thousand, but on, on the second floor, it's two thousand. So that's six, and then six in the back, so it's six and six, fifty, fifty.
The six in the back is fifty percent of the building's square footage.
Yeah, and you count, I mean, you, you know, the builders, it counts the second floor as square footage.
But the thing is, is that this is, is for the use, for a particular. Yeah, the thing is, is that this is, is for the use, for a particular use. It's not for a building. So this is, again, a retail use. So instead of thinking of his building, think of some other buildings that may have retail, a big retail building or a big building that might have some retail and split it up into several spaces. So like one of these buildings up here, like where the bike shop is. If the building's extended back, instead of just a row of three or four retail buildings, the buildings were deeper. They could have, you know, still the retail space in front, whether it's the bike shop or a card shop or, you know, whatever other shop it is that might require, like a bike shop requires, you know, a lot of storage space. Maybe they, they would want to do that, maybe they, not just storage, but they also sell to other bike shop. There might be an importer of a certain kind of bike, so they might ship stuff out.
Or IT, for example. Somebody's, you know, selling computers, they have a storefront, they don't need the whole thing of a storefront. Most of it's for storage. They'll have offices and...
I mean, they can pretty much do that now. But, you know, you know, originally he wasn't gonna have any retail, so... So now, and he can't really retail the regular wine as well. So I think that's why we're discussing doing this, so that we don't have to, again, go roundabout. Is that if we can make it, you know, something that might work for not just him, but for other retailers, it might...
For small businesses who, you know...
Now, is this something that has to go through town meeting?
This would have to go through town meeting and then to the planning board for site plan review of the building. I mean, we could, he could file for site plan review of the building at any time because it's just for the building. But he may not be able to move his business and operate out of there unless it...
Unless this zoning change or something similar happens.
A clarification is really, I think, the word is.
Jack, your comment?
If anybody could indulge me, has this gentleman made a presentation to the planning board prior to my arrival? Because this, all of a sudden, because this is not normally how a client would get up and say, I want to do this, that, and the other thing. They bring in the engineers and all this.
Yeah, but he's not at that point yet. He's seen it's even worth paying an engineer to get that far.
What's this street address, I'm sorry?
Main Street.
Main Street?
Fifty-eight Main, it's in his farmhouse.
Michelle O'Nora, did you have any comments?
I mean, I, I, I would be, you know, interested in supporting small business, especially local business. I think this is definitely something that we should consider and maybe discuss further. Like you said, maybe adding language about the fifty percent or something along those lines, just as a reassurance. Now, and when you say retail, is it like a wine tasting? Or is it more like a liquor store where you go in and purchase or...
Technically, we can't because the alcohol system, it's a three-tier system. It's set up so that no big monopolies can take over and do everything. So we have the two systems, we import and we wholesale sell, sell to the stores. And then the stores sell to the customers. And we're not really allowed to do that. We don't want to do it, it's not our business, you know. And it's cleaner and smaller to do it the way we do it. So we can't if we wanted to. But we do have non-alcoholic, a line of non-alcoholic spirits, no alcohol at all. So that we could, we have no problem doing that. We'd be happy to set up a shop, do tastings. And then some of the, another thing that came up, said that we could possibly, you know, work with Dave over at Tamarack and maybe, you know, on weekends, he could bring his license over and do tastings of spirits. But we can't sell directly, but he can.
Oh, so you can't sell to...
You know, something like that.
Customers, you have to sell to, well, your customers are...
He's a distributor.
Yeah, we're not really allowed to do retail directly to the customer.
So is any of your business, like you had said, you have a couple pallets daily or weekly shipped out in a box truck. Any online sales where you ship, like, does UPS come and pick up smaller packages? And is that something that's really not...
We will send samples to, to, to different retail or other distributors in other parts of the country. We just break it down to FedEx and they do it. And FedEx is the only one allowed to sell, to ship alcohol. So it's, you know, really regulated though. I mean, the thing is, if we were selling widgets and we wanted this design, we wouldn't even be here, I suppose. It would just be, you know, but because the alcohol thing, it doesn't allow us to have the thing. But we will do it because we have, we can do it because we have a non-alcoholic thing. So I think that satisfies it, but not everything.
It's not the alcohol thing, it's, because it's not a license you're looking for. It's really, it's just the warehouse in a business.
Calling it a warehouse instead of storage, yeah, that's, that's what it is.
And I'm not trying to...
No, no, I know, I know.
Semantically change it. Store, you have a storeroom for your product. But it's within a retail or a business zone. So, yeah, I mean, it's a clarification of language and how you get from A to B. And like I said, my concern is not your business.
No.
It's if we make this change, do we open the floodgates to...
And I understand that.
And we clearly do not want to permit warehouses in the business zone, which is why I crafted this, you know, to sort of meet kind of what he'd like to do. And then kind of get some feedback and see how we should adjust it.
For all we know, there's stores right now that are doing this.
Yeah, absolutely.
And this would actually just bring them into compliance. Like there could be, say, a small store that, one of the many stores you just mentioned, that keeps things in the back, that brings them in and ships them out. And they still have a front store. So there could be instances where this would bring those smaller stores into compliance as well.
Again, the only reason that I'm here is because it's alcohol. Because we'd be doing it other ones. We'd happily, if we're selling widgets, we'd have those nice widgets stored up front and then we'll store the, you know, whatever it is, with computers or bicycles or lawnmowers.
Gonna sell something else that's non-alcoholic.
We'd be happy to do that.
Your intent is not to build a distribution similar to Arizona.
No, absolutely, we can't. In fact, if you look at the law, we're limited. And I think that's what, Mark's idea was, was so practical. It just says, oh, a small business, they're never gonna get bigger than that. Limit the cap and, and like you said, maybe make it sixty, forty, fifty, fifty, whatever. I'll say, well, there has to have some retail, we satisfy the retail. And we have another tenant who's also doing retail. So it's never gonna, and actually, we're trying to make it so it looks like a farmer's porch in front.
Can we see that?
Friendly, it's nice, you know, it's...
Thank you.
I've lived in that neighborhood twenty-one years. In fact, I came before your board when they first sold the farm. And I, I think I convinced them to put a sidewalk in on that side of the street. At first they said, no, no, never happen, never can happen. But then they started looking at the state, the state put the money for it, and they did. And so I'm thrilled that I was able to help, influence in that way. Glad to have a sidewalk across it. The people behind us now can walk to the train station or wherever they want. So, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. I think this, you know, what we want to do is, it's, it is great to put in the language to say, you can make it bigger because you can anyway, you know, it'll never be bigger than, you know, ten thousand, seven fifty or whatever you want to put in.
What's that, like raised mezzanine there that's exterior? Is that like a balcony?
It's a second floor with windows.
Oh.
We were thinking about putting that for offices upstairs, you know. Initially, we thought maybe, you know, even putting an apartment, but that was, said, no, you don't allow apartments or living space, which kind of seems puzzling to me too because, you know, you know, live, work businesses, I think helped build this country on main streets. But we're all right, we backed off of that, so we'll just make it offices. Offices on the second floor, retail on the first, and then storage in the back. Simple, simple, small, limit us, we'll, you know, we'll stay within the limits.
Could you, Mark, did you have a chance to talk to Nate about that interpretation and...
Yes, yeah, well, I mean, he's...
I've been going back and forth with Mark.
He talked to Nate first, then he came to me and I was like, yeah, it's really kind of a, really is kind of a warehouse. And no matter how big it is, the way that the zoning currently is crafted, it wouldn't be allowed. Kind of same thing like with the apartment upstairs. So, you know, he, you know, talked to, I talked to Nate, he confirmed that. So he came in and so we discussed it further and we came up with something like this.
Limitations, which is funny, which makes it safe for everyone. And maybe, like you said, inviting other small businesses to come in and have, have a modern business, which is online.
You know, have some further discussions with Nate about this and, you know, and any other feedback about trying to require a certain percentage or a certain size of the retail associated with the storage space. So what you might find is that you'll have a retail, so for him, he wants like six thousand square feet of storage. But you might have a similar building, but you might have two people, two retail storefronts in the front, each needing three thousand square feet of store, of warehouse, storage space, whatever you want to call it. Because they also do a lot of online business, so, so, you know, it, once a building is constructed, it can come under various layouts. So that's why if we craft some sort of minimum retail associated with that, we kind of have to be careful that we don't make it too restrictive one way or another. So that someone, so let's say, you know, a few years, he retires, he sells his business, somebody else wants to move somewhere else. We want that building to be able to be reused. And so, you know, someone may, may not want to blow the wall out, make it one big retail. They may want to split it up and, and have still have retail, but some, some other store space. So we want to make sure it'll work that way, too.
Okay. All right, so we'll continue to discuss and figure out something. And then, you know, I'm sure if we get to a agreement within the board and zoning, that Mark would let you know.
All right, I appreciate that. So, so I guess the hope is, and I think it's the only way they have to, is if it would go, it would have to go, this kind of change, limitations, clarification, has to go before the town.
Yeah, it would be a town meeting change, the zoning change.
At some point, if it discussed, the discussion goes like, oh, this could work. Someone will let me know and then it'll somehow have to get on the town agenda or something.
So, so what happens is, is the planning board will discuss it at the next couple meetings in July. If it, they vote to move it forward, we will then, the final language would be sent to the selectmen, at which time it'll come back to the planning board for public hearings. And then it'll be placed on the fall town meeting. And the planning board will vote a recommendation for it to happen or not.
At that point, if it does get on and it does pass, then we would submit the actual plans.
Yes, and then, yeah, because you clearly want to make sure you can do something before you spend all that money, if that's correct. So, yes.
Well, thanks, thank you guys. Thank you very much for listening and considering it. I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, any other business?
Not really, unless there's any other zoning related things that have been bugging you for a while that you'd like me to...
Oh, I do have something for all business. The Open Space Residential Development. I did get together with Nancy, Ed, and Chris from Board of Health. And so they were gonna take it to their next meeting and discuss it and, and send us back their comments. And then hopefully move forward with that as well, some additions.
I was going to, I wanted, before I circled back to that, to try and stay on our schedule of items that we had originally talked about doing, which is why I wanted to work on this first before getting back to that. So I'll see what, whatever comments they come up with. And some will be things that you guys clearly were opposed to. Some were, will be things that it'll be like, yeah, okay, like the Article ninety-seven. It was just, I simplified the restrictions, it does the exact same thing that you was talking about. But, you know, we, we can, we can do that.
The only thing I think that I would be, dig my heels in on is the by right as opposed to special permit.
Oh, and it, and, yeah, and she said that that had, it was not hinging on that at all, so...
And so the, the other thing that I really, you know, although it wasn't, I didn't really take much of a recommendation and it was more of, who's not here?
Barbara?
Barbara, yeah. About the homeowners associations owning.
Oh, right.
And she didn't want that. And there are other legitimate reasons why you really don't want homeowners associations owning the open space. And it actually would probably require more monitoring, not less monitoring. Because if it's owned by the association and they want to do a play area, they want to do, expand a pool house, they want to do, I mean, there's lots of things because not everything's gonna be a small little, you know, six lot cluster, some might be much larger. You know, it's, it's, it becomes an enforcement issue as opposed to if you own the land and they have to come asking. Or if you, they do something, like they, they start storing sand and salt on, be over the property line.
Yeah.
You know, then it becomes an enforcement issue as opposed to, you're on our property, get it off. And that's like much simpler thing to deal with than it's their property and now they're storing some stuff there and, and other things. So I, you know, I, I, I still not really...
Did you see this version that I sent back?
I did not look at it yet, so...
Because it did add back in that section about the HOA, but it's, it's very thorough to discuss, you know, responsibilities and how to, how to move forward if there is an issue as well.
The, to touch on the, whether it be a homeowners association or town owned land, just my opinion, there has to be town owned land. I mean, this is benefiting the town, the townspeople have to be able to access it. And, and if we were to ever do one of these, that road has to be a town road.
All right, but you're talking about the road, but I think this was in relation to the open space, managing the open space.
I would never approve anything that was gonna be controlled by the homeowners there. I, I just wouldn't.
So how does it get maintained if you don't have some kind of ownership?
Well, I don't think, like, I don't think it's gonna take any, any maintenance. But you want to prevent it from becoming what, what six people have an idea of. Six people, not the entire town, you know what I mean? If they say, hey, you know, we're gonna put up a, an in-text pool out in the, out in our homeowners area. You know what I mean? It, it could happen, you know?
I'm not so concerned about putting up a pool or anything. I'm talking about maintaining the rural beauty of that area. For instance, LeBaron Hills Country Club, they have homeowners association down there. Now that we've finally completed the construction down there, who's gonna oversee the common area? If we don't have a homeowners association that's gonna take ownership of that and then, you know, say, make the recommendations?
Yes.
And say this, that, and the other thing. If you just leave it up to whom? The town, the town doesn't, the town's not gonna get involved.
Well, but your situation's a little different.
Okay.
Because that's, that's a forty B and it's condominiums as opposed to a cluster of single-family homes.
Okay.
So this is a bylaw for a cluster of single-family homes. So, yeah, so that...
You're talking about a guy that's only been here two years.
So, so it got me beat by eighteen months.
Yeah.
All right, so on that note, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.